Yes.
Township, Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, September 10, 2013, public invited, public participation, meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for your flags. Mr. DiPiero?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I live it up. It's good.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Here.
Mr. DiPiero?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here, others present. Jasmine Lynn, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancy Wazir, Miss Township Clerk. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for a regular Township Council meeting, September 17, 2013. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appear in both the Delhi Record on December 14, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012. It was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio station on December 10, 2012. In addition, adequate notice of this location change to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on June 21, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appear in the Delhi Record on June 26, 2013. It was forwarded by fax to the Star Ledger, Precipity Life, and local radio station on June 21, 2013. Note, Council meetings are videotaped and air and cable vision public access Channel 21 at 12:00 PM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
At this time, entertain a motion to go into closed session for threatened litigation.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of public from a meeting certain circumstances, whereas the Township Council in the opinion such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, potential litigation, whereas minutes will be kept once a matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council, Township Precipity Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Ferrara.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Make a motion to reconvene to open session.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Ferrara to reconvene into open session. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Okay, appointments, we have a discussion on Open Space Committee. We currently have two open, I guess?
Yes.
Two open seats.
Mr. President, what's happened here is we have two people on the Open Space Committee. Their terms end in April, one of 2012 and one 2013. And they're the only two out of all of the appointments we make that don't end on a calendar year, and they both expired. So, what I would recommend to you, since I'm the liaison, is that we renew them and make them calendar years again. Chandu to end on 12/31/15 and Ruth Palmeri to end 12/31/16, and then we're in conformance with all the other appointments.
That's what's on here.
So, I made a motion.
I just have a question, Mr. DiPiero. Those are the only two, right?
Yes, right now.
Those are the only two out of all the appointments the Council makes.
No, I understand with the move into December, it's a great idea.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, those are the only two that are asking for the position, that's all I was asking. Is there other people?
These are reappointments.
Oh, reappointments, okay.
No other terms expired.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. DiPiero to reappoint the two people, and we're going to move the ending date one to 12/31/15 and one to 12/31/16.
I don't think so.
Yes.
Chandu's on the list.
I think that person's gone too, if I'm correct.
Well, he's still on the list.
Well, the list is not up to date, because I remember having that conversation. Why don't we?
Yancy just updated it.
The open space is up to date.
He was on that list. Can we check? I mean, it doesn't make a difference to me. I don't have anybody.
Okay, how about for now, we entertain a motion to move them both to December. We'll hold off till next meeting just to check the list. Is that okay with you, Mr. DiPiero?
Let's put them both on, and then we'll, if Chandu really is not supposed to be a member, then we'll reappoint, we'll pick someone else.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero to reappoint, making the ending 12/31/1 for both. Motion by Mr. DiPiero.
Well, they have to be for different, they're...
Yes, two different terms. One ends in 15, one ends in 16.
Right.
So, what's the motion?
The motion is to reappoint Ruth Palmeri to three-year term ending 12/31/16, and Chandu Borena, three-year term ending 12/31/15. And then we'll go back and investigate and see if something happened with Chandu that's not on the record.
I am pretty sure that Council President Stanton signed a letter to that gentleman.
Yeah, I agree with you, but we will check. So, the motions by Mr. DiPiero?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinances, second reading, public hearings. Have you been set for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, status of adopted ordinances, 2013, colon, 23, ordinance failed. Discussion, scheduled meetings, 9/17/2013, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, Precipity Hills High School, public invited, public participation, 10/1, 2013, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, Town Hall, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, April 1, 2013, special meeting, budget review. Okay, administration, anything?
Yes, I just want, I'm sorry, I just wanted to discuss the development with the Rose House New Bridge project. I sent out, I memoed to the Council on this earlier. I think, actually, you probably got it yesterday. Do you want to discuss it?
Yes.
Okay. New Bridge and Rose House have proposed a development on Henry Street, and it involved a group home, a four-person, a four-bedroom group home, and a six-unit apartment building that were connected via breezeway. So, basically, one building, or two buildings that were attached. The federal government has since decided that they don't like to see large buildings like that, and they wanted to see the two projects on two separate sites, so, which will require that New Bridge go for a subdivision. They are planning to go for that subdivision, and the proposed subdivision should not require any variances, so it shouldn't be a problem to get that subdivision. However, the seller wants to close next week, and in the agreement, it asks that, or the agreement with New Bridge is contingent upon receipt of all governmental approvals. And so, what New Bridge is proposing is that the township reimburse them for the cost of the acquisition of the property and pre-development costs. It's about $250,000 out of the $505,000 that we had allocated to this project, if they receive a zoning permit for the six-unit apartment building, which is what the $505,000 was for. And the remainder of the funds would not be released until after they've received building, subdivision approval and building permits for the project. If for some reason they don't get the subdivision, they'll just proceed with the six-unit apartment building, and we'll just, and the $505,000 project is a standalone project rather than a project including the four-unit group home. So, what we were looking for is just council concurrence with our proposal to release the funds, the acquisition costs and the pre-development funds upon issuance of a zoning permit for the six-apartment building project.
Okay, and in here, it says there's no risk for the township?
There's very little risk. They've already conducted environmental assessments on the, on the, I think geotechnical also on the property. So, there shouldn't be any reason why the six-unit apartment project could not be built.
Which board are they going before, the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Board? Planning Board?
Planning Board.
Jasmine, how large is this lot?
How large is the lot? Forty-five thousand square feet, so almost about an acre.
Okay. Jasmine, what would be the, I know it says there's very little risk to the township, what would be the only risk?
The risk is that for some reason they can't build on the property, and they've already conducted the geotechnical studies. That's one of the pre-development costs that they're asking for reimbursement on.
All right, I vote yes.
Okay. Do you want us to do a roll call?
If you don't mind doing a roll call, that would be fine. We don't really need a resolution.
Okay, roll call.
Is there no motion, just a roll call?
The motion is to approve an advancement of the funds that we had already promised them.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero?
Hold on. Don't we have to just set the agenda and make the motion next, and pass this resolution at the next meeting?
We don't need a resolution.
They just want approval.
We just need a concurrence from the Council.
All right.
There's a motion by Mr. DiPiero?
I'm just holding off until the attorney comes back, just in case there's any change.
If we do our poll now, and you find out otherwise, then you just don't do it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. DiPiero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Engineering report for September 2013. Mr. Krefi?
Status of road resurfacing, putting stone area, no change. Revisions to escrow requirements in connection with residential sidewalk slash driveway repairs, no change. Canterbury Estates, vacation of lots 26 and 77 and Block 98, no change. Glacier Hills sidewalk, questions have arisen about the annual sidewalk replacement project, which included locations in the Glacier Hills section of town last year. Property owners are responsible for the maintenance and replacement of sidewalk log on the frontage of their property. However, the township is responsible for repair slash replacement if the damage is caused by township trade. The annual replacement, the annual project is for the replacement of curb and sidewalk damage by trees in a township right of way. This office is evaluating the quality of work completed at the end of last year, and any corrective action needed will be addressed once the project begins again this spring. All required corrective measures have been completed, no further action is needed, and this item can be removed from the agenda. NJ Transit bus stops...
Can we remove it?
Yes, yes, it can be removed.
New Jersey Transit bus stops, New Jersey Transit is proposing a bus stop on westbound Route 46 on the near side of the Lackawanna Avenue intersection. This office has no objection to the proposed relocation. The Township Council will need to adopt a resolution agreeing to the bus stop at this new location.
This is the location that's already being used, right? If I'm correct?
Now, you might be thinking of the one on Baldwin Road?
Okay.
That was already being used.
By Walgreens.
Yeah, I don't know if this one is done, being used.
I don't think so. I drive by there every day. I don't have it somewhere.
I guess they need our permission.
Yeah, this is a different one. Yeah. I have no problem. Pass the resolution.
Ball in favor?
We'll put it on the consent agenda next week, right?
Yes.
New Jersey Transit bus stops, New Jersey Transit is proposing a bus stop on the westbound Route 10 on the near side of the South Powder Mill Road intersection. This office has no objection to the proposed relocation. The Township Council will need to adopt a resolution agreeing to the bus stop at this new location.
No objection. Hold on, I have a question about that. Where exactly is this going to be? What, the near side, what?
Well done.
Is that just past the jug handle?
It's westbound on the northerly side of...
There is a bus stop there now.
Westbound...
Because there is a bus stop there already?
I'm going to say...
Just before the light.
Right before the light, after the, right before the light.
Just before the light on the westbound side.
Jasmine, before you put that on the agenda, could you just find out if it's the existing
bus stop and they're just trying to memorialize that, or if they're thinking...
I don't know what near side means. Either it's past the light, which would make, past the jug handle, which would make more sense, or it's going to block traffic that's trying to get on the jug handle.
Yeah, because near side to me is before the light.
Right, and that's where it is now.
That's where that building is, right?
Well, they changed the jug handle a few years ago, so there's a turnoff to go to Powder Mill Road North, which used to be the jug handle, and the bus stop is currently after that, which is really a good spot.
It's in between that and the light.
Because it's in a shoulder where they're, in a non-lane. If they were to move it after the light, that would be a disaster for people going and using the new jug handle.
But if it's on the westbound side, the northerly side, that's not South Powder Mill Road, that's...
It doesn't say northerly side.
Right? It says, it says South Powder Mill Road.
Westbound Route 10 on the near side of the South Powder Mill intersection.
South Powder Mill Road is across the street.
Right, but it's saying westbound.
That's not westbound.
But it's saying south, which is east.
Saying westbound Route 10.
Right.
Well, they're just, I guess they're just calling to the South Powder Mill Road, but at the intersection, that's where north and south meet, at the traffic light.
There is just a...
My gut feeling is it's, it's the same intersection, it's the same station, stop that they've been using. If we just find that out?
I'll find out.
Okay.
South Powder Mill Road? It's by South Powder Mill Road?
Yeah.
Endorsement of NJ DOT grant, Vale Road, we are in the process of preparing and submitting a grant application through the FY 2014 NJ DOT Municipal Aid Program. The application is for the reconstruction of Vale Road from Mill Road to North Beverick Road. The project includes installing drainage of curbs as well as reconstruction of the roadbed. The application is due on September 20, 2013. A resolution endorsing the application will need to be adopted by the Township Council.
No objection.
That's fine.
Okay.
KF Schoolhouse, performance guarantee release, Block 202, Lot 1.05. The developer has completed all required site construction activity of the performance guarantee. Inspections have been made at the site during the course of construction, and this office has no objection to the release of the performance guarantee in the form of a letter of credit. Resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council.
No objection.
Galaxo Smith-Kline Performance Guarantee Release, Block 181, Lot 19. The developer has completed all required site construction activity of the performance guarantee. Inspections have been made at the site during the course of construction, and this office has no objection to the release of the performance guarantee in the form of a letter of credit. A resolution will need to be adopted by the Township Council.
No objection.
No objection. The New Jersey Transit bus stop on Route 10, are we going to put that on the consent agenda? And you're going to clarify it in the meantime?
Yeah, but I'll let you know, I'll let you know whether it's the same as the existing one.
Yeah. Anything?
Jasmine?
Just, we have the resolution for the audit.
If, with that, with that bus stop, if it's in the same place that's existing right now, then I would say just put it on the consent agenda. If it's someplace else, then we really need to look at that a little closer, because that's...
Well, then we could take it off the consent agenda and table it.
If it's different.
If it's in a different place, okay.
Okay, communications, discussion, resolution, Township West Milford, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, providing a recap of it, meeting with the primary sponsor, Senator Joseph Panaccio regarding amendments to Senate Bill 2511 and 2512.
I can explain that.
Okay.
If the Council remembers at the end of last year, you passed a resolution opposing or requesting amendments be made to this bill. Senator Panaccio is one of the main sponsors of this bill, and he was kind enough to meet with the towns within his district to go over some of their concerns. We did, me and Ms. Lim did attend this meeting, and he went over page by page all of our concerns, and the resolution that Township of West Milford is proposing pretty much just memorializes the meeting and his acceptance of some of the things he was going to go back and look at and possibly change. So, they just want a resolution of support to say that, yes, we also agree to some of the changes that were made or requested from him.
Well, there's no guarantee those changes are going to be made, but what the resolution is, as I understood the resolution, it's saying they support the proposed changes.
Yes.
And I would support those proposed changes too, but there's no guarantee that those changes are going to go through on those bills.
Yancy, when are these, when are these Senate bills coming up for a vote?
They seem to come up every few months and then get taken off the Senate floor.
Yeah, I'm support, I would support the changes that were proposed. I read them.
Okay. So, I'll prepare a similar resolution to the one that West Milford did?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Applications, resolution approving new limousine license for Airlink's Limo Taxi LLC. Resolution, Township Council, Township Precipity Troy Hills, authorizing person-to-person transfer, planery, retail, distribution license for Wine Amphire Wines and Liquors LLC.
Council President, if I made the liquor license was listed on the agenda meeting last month, but we had to pull it off prior to the regular meeting because they had not closed on the property. They have since closed, so we were able to put it back on for them.
Okay.
Do you know which one it is?
Which property is that?
The, it's a person-to-person transfer, but they had to sell it by, so I'm not sure where the Amorphe wines is. Look it up, I think.
Which location is it?
It says 799 Route 46.
Thank you.
Chili's?
I'm guessing.
Amphore Wines and Liquor? Sriji and Ruchi.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, open it to the public.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, at this time, open it to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak. Please come up, sign in.
What's going on? Nobody wants to come. Which one is it? The top? The middle?
Hit one. The middle, I think.
Yep, okay. I got it.
Make sure you stop it, though.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fine, it's...
It's only like 10 seconds. It's okay.
I think that's enough.
Okay.
Pat, you want to give me four copies?
That's all right. We'll share, we can share.
I have one.
Which one?
I'm okay.
Yeah. Pat, just your name and address real quick. Thank you.
Avenue. As I said, I'm surprised I didn't hear anything about this letter that was sent by the ACLU to Brian Stanton, who'd have come and copied to Mr. Inglisino and to myself. I'm going to read this letter, and for the record, dated August 29th, some of the ACLU written to Brian Stanton, read the public comments at public meetings of the Precipity Township Council. Dear Mr. Stanton, the American Civil Liberties Union of New Jersey is concerned by a complaint we received from Precipity resident Pat Petacca, who is not permitted to make certain statements during the public comment portion of the Precipity Township Council meeting held on April 9. After viewing an audiovisual recording of the April 9 public meeting, it is clear that Ms. Petacca sought to speak about a governmental issue that may be of concern to the residents of the municipality. Therefore, pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, she was entitled to discuss her issue of interest during the public comment period of the April 9 meeting, see NJSA 10, colon, 4-12. The recording makes it equally clear that Ms. Petacca was repeatedly interrupted and thereby prevented from speaking to the Council about this issue by Township Attorney John Inglisino. More than once, she was accused of engaging in harassment behavior and publicly motivated attacks. However, none of these accusations supported restricting the time, place, or manner of Ms. Petacca's speech during the public comment portion of the public meeting, see Besler versus W. Windsor. In a traditional public forum like the public comment period of a public meeting deserves heightened constitutional protection, subject only to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that are justified without references to the content of the regulated speech. As the New Jersey Supreme Court decision in Besler makes clear, the Council or its attorney could not simply decide that Ms. Petacca had already received all the explanations to which she was entitled regarding the topic of her comments, and therefore that she would not be permitted to ask more questions relating to that topic. We've got a footnote that says Ms. Petacca's questioning of the mayor and the Council regarding a non-public meeting that at least one elected official and several other individuals fraudulently attended outside of regular business hours to allegedly discuss creating a new position within the Precipity Police Department clearly falls within the above statutory description of proper subjects for public comment under the Open Public Meetings Act. Indeed, New Jerseyans have a First Amendment right to inquire about the work of elected officials regarding sensitive or unpopular subject matter and with remarks that are caustic or sharp. After reviewing the Besler decision and the recording of the April 9 meeting, it seems clear that the restrictions placed on Ms. Petacca at that meeting violated her constitutional rights. We therefore ask the Township Council to confirm the following. One, that all members of the public are permitted to speak about matters of public concern in public meetings of the Council, regardless of whether the Council agrees with the content of a particular comment. And two, that Ms. Petacca should have been permitted to speak about that topic she tried to raise at the April 9 public meeting. And will be permitted to speak on that topic when she again attempts to raise it at a further Council meetings. Given the clarity of the law, I am hopeful that this matter can be immeatively resolved and that the ACLU, New Jersey, will not need to take further steps to protect the constitutional right to free speech at public meetings on behalf of Ms. Petacca. And then it asks to be, please be advised by September 13th regarding the Council's position on the above points. Please contact me if you wish to discuss this matter. Edward Baracus, Legal Director of the ACLU. My first question would be, did the Council members know this came in? Were you advised of this letter prior to my giving it to you tonight?
I was giving a copy, yes.
Well, you, yes, because it was addressed to you. Were the other Council members informed that this letter was received?
We just learned about it tonight.
Thank you. This is, again, transparency at its worst. This should have been shared with the Council right from the beginning. This is not just for Brian and John Inglisino, this is to the Council too, telling you that you violated somebody's rights. Okay?
Thirty seconds left.
And I just find it surprising, and I think, my personal opinion would be that you put this on the agenda and have a discussion regarding this.
Actually, I was just going to ask a question. Are you all done?
Let Pat finish first.
Yes.
Pat, go ahead.
Are you all, are you all done?
Yes.
Okay. You know how we just voted a few minutes ago on the Rose House, just to concur? Does, just as a discussion, does any of the other Council members have a, have a problem just acknowledging or affirming question, bullet point number one on this? Yeah, could you? Do you want him to address it?
Yeah.
Pat, I'm going to turn the microphone over.
May I ask, can I respond?
I'll give you a few seconds. I can't let you go.
Ms. Petacca, first of all, I know that you feel that your free speech rights were violated because I intervened, and I know that you feel that I obstructed your right to speech, and I apologize for that. It was never my intention to deprive you of your rights of free speech because of what you were saying, because of what you were asking, or anything of that sort. The reason why I did what I did was because, at that particular time, the township had just received a grand jury subpoena, which happened to be concerning the exact subject matter that you were addressing. And in my judgment, there was a risk, a real risk, that the terms of that grand jury subpoena would have been compromised. And my judgment was, that was, you know, a bigger problem than, you know, the arguable curtailment of First Amendment rights in that limited circumstance. I was frustrated that evening in the sense that I could not tell you why I did what I did, because we were not able to disclose the existence of the grand jury subpoena. I tried to address that as soon as I could, which I did at the May 14th meeting, so that you and the public would understand that, you know, my intention was not to deprive you of First Amendment rights. You know, so I want to personally apologize to you. If I were you, and I were asking those questions, and I was shut down under those circumstances, I would be upset as well. Again, my frustration that evening was not with you, it was with the fact that I couldn't tell you why. Please understand that, you know, to my knowledge, you've never been told that you can't speak, and that the affected speech really dealt only with the subject matter that was the subject of the grand jury subpoena. It had, you know, anything else that you wanted to speak upon, there was no effort to curtail speech on any other subject or any other matter. It was a very unique set of circumstances, you know, at a particular time where, you know, the grand jury subpoena was particularly relevant. Of course, since the prosecutor's vindication, that issue is removed, and, you know, I can assure you that, from my perspective in the future, I think that when, when matters come up like that, if we have a similar situation, I spoke with Mr., I forget his last name.
Barakis.
Barakis about it, and, you know, one of the things that we discussed, which I think is a good suggestion, and what I suggest we implement going forward, is that when a member of the public asks questions or makes statements, and there is engagement on a subject that, you know, may compromise the township's position or interest in a matter, you know, that, that I would advise the council to refrain from comment, and if necessary, make an immediate motion to go into closed session to discuss it. That would have been a better way, quite frankly, of handling it that night, and I recognize that. But I want you to understand that, you know, that there were circumstances, unique circumstances that night, that, you know, motivated my conduct, that had nothing to do with an effort to curtail your free speech. And so, you know, to the extent you feel that you were mistreated in that respect, again, I apologize. It was nobody else, there was nobody on the council. It was, it was me. And, you know, I'm preparing a response, you know, to Mr. Barakis. On behalf of the council, I've discussed it with Council President Stanton, that will address those points. And clearly, you know, all of the points in the letter, you know, that members are permitted to speak about matters of public concern at public meetings of the council, regardless of whether the council agrees with the content of a particular comment, absolutely, members of the public have that right. And, you know, as township attorney, I'll defend that right. There's no question about that. That Ms. Petacca should have been permitted to speak about a topic she tried to raise at the April 9th meeting, and will be permitted to speak on that topic when she again attempts to raise it at future council meetings. Obviously, if you want to raise that question again, you're more than welcome to, to raise it and discuss it, because the, the reason for curtailing speech on that evening is no longer in existence. Again, I think that, you know, in the future, the way to handle it would be to, you know, sort of, if I'm going to feel the need to interject, to interject and go into closed session immediately. But I felt under the circumstances that there was a real risk, that the township's interests with respect to the grand jury subpoena would be compromised. And, you know, sometimes, when you're in these positions, you don't have great choices. You know, sometimes, you know, it's damned if you do, damned if you don't. And I wanted to err on the side of protecting the township's interest with regard to the grand jury subpoena, and, you know, I understand that you feel, certainly felt at the time, that that wasn't what you wanted, that, you know, that's something you wouldn't have agreed with, and I appreciate that. So, I hope that that clears the air, or at least gives you a better understanding of where, where I'm coming from on it. I will respond to Mr. Barakis's letter, you know, probably right on Friday, and, you know, I've just told you the contents of what it's going to say.
I spoke with Mr. Barakis afterwards. Actually, he called to confirm with me that another letter was going to be sent out. He still says the explanation is not justifiable. All as I can say is that any other time that anybody has asked a question regarding something, if you could not speak about it, you sat there and said, "It's under investigation," or, you know, "It's back here." Not getting up and being attacked. The man got up out of his chair, leaned over, and was yelling, and accusing me of leaving a threatening message for the mayor, accused me of being politically motivated, when every single one of you know I've been coming up here for nine years, three administrations, and I say what's on my mind. Don't ever accuse me of being politically motivated. My choices are my choices. It has nothing to do with politics, number one. I told you that night when you gave me that explanation, I could not accept it because of the obnoxious, rude, deplorable behavior that came that night. A lot of townspeople saw that, okay? It's, it's not me saying my constitutional rights were violated. You may not think that you violated my constitutional rights. All as I need to know is the ACLU said you did.
Pat, can you speak into the mic?
All as I need to know is that the ACLU said you did violate my constitutional rights. No matter how you justify it, it's not acceptable, okay? I'm sorry, it is not acceptable. You did so much damage that night, I don't even think you're aware of what you did. And that's all I want this on record. I want people to be aware of it, and I want this to be discussed between the council members. The transparency is very lax lately. This should have been brought to your attention right away.
Pat, when Mr. Inglesino writes to Mr. Barakis, I'm sure that the entire council will be carbon copied on that letter.
Well, it depends on who's saying who's writing it. Now, I was told Ed is writing it or something, so I don't know what's going on. I talked to Ed Barakis the other day. He called me, told me he was going to send something out this week. So, we'll wait for that to come.
No, I just said, I said, when Mr. Inglesino just...
When we respond.
Just said that.
Yes.
When Mr. Inglesino responds, I'm sure that the council will be carbon copied on that correspondence.
I hope so. I hope so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just don't want to see another resident being treated like that.
See, no one else come forward? I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ferraro, second by Mr. Creefy. Roll call.
Mr. Creefy.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Good night, all.
Good night.